Welcome to the January 8th, 2018, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words about Mayor Baldini.
Pledge.
Later.
Okay.
This first, I'd like to do this first. Is that okay? Commissioners, I would also ask that you hold your comments to the end of the meeting, during Commissioner's comments, just so we can move this meeting along. As everyone knows, we lost a special person when Mayor Tom Baldini left us day after Christmas. I would like to express our condolences to his family, to his friends, and his associates. His death took away a man who worked tirelessly for our city and our region. I could list his accomplishments, but they are too numerous, and we pretty well know what he did. Mayor Baldini was a teacher and a government worker. He worked at the local, state, and federal level. He was well-connected in both Lansing and Washington DC. But I believe that Mayor Baldini's biggest contributions were here at the local level in Marquette. He did so much for our community. He was on numerous boards, committees, and commissions. Tom wanted to serve where he could and make Marquette to be a better place. I have known Tom for many years, but I got closer to him in the last three and a half years while I was on commission with him. I can tell you that he was a busy man. Every day for him was filled with meetings, conversations, and work sessions. Tom was not in it for the glory or recognition, but rather he wanted Marquette to be a progressive and vibrant place to be. I was looking forward to serving with Tom, with him as the mayor, because just being around him was an educational experience. There was much to learn from him, watching how he handled difficult situations, how he viewed problems, and how he came up with the right solutions. You could see that he knew how to handle all kinds of different challenges, because he had been through them before. It was rare to find a person who is dedicated to making his community a better place by volunteering constantly and doing most of the work, but Tom was that person. We are all going to miss Tom. He made our lives and our community better. Could we please honor Mayor Tom Baldini by bowing our heads and giving him a moment Thank you. Now, I would like to call this meeting order. Could you please stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plourd.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana.
Here.
We have the agenda in front of us. Does someone want to make a motion to approve this agenda? Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Plourd?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Announcements? I do not have any. Boards and committees, we have one appointment tonight. That appointment is Jeremy Otaway to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending 2/15/2020. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we appoint Jeremy Otaway to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending February 15th, 2020.
Is there a second? Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Comments? None?
None.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carries six zero. We come to our first public comment of the evening. Public comment is a time when residents can reserve time to speak on one of our business items that's coming up further in the meeting, or they can speak to us right now. We give you three minutes. We just need you to give us your name and home address. We're going to open public comment. Does anybody wish to speak at the front podium, please?
Hi, my name is David Allen, 805 North Front Street, Marquette. I'm here with the League of Women Voters, and I just wanted to let you guys know that we're starting an observer corps, which follows various governmental institutions. We're going to be following six local government entities, one of which is this one. I'll be coordinating the observer corps, but also observing the Marquette City Commission, and just wanted to introduce you to myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bob Convenzi, 306 North Sixth Street. Tom Baldini was a special person. And I know we're going to, you're going to end up appointing another person to, I guess, take his seat, or sit in his chair, probably somebody that can't be replaced for all that he did. The main reason I wanted to get up here and say a few words tonight was I really would hope that this board, the manager, the staff, would really look into the recycling program, especially concerning glass. About a year ago, I was at a county landfill meeting when Brad Austin talked to the group, the landfill board, and he said, "We have to start looking at recyclable materials a little bit different." They're a commodity. The price goes up and down, and it's, if we can't make a buck at it, or break even at it, should we just throw it in the landfill? I don't think we should, and I don't think most people think that we should. We may have to pay to recycle some of these materials. So it's a little different way of maybe thinking about it than a lot of us have thought about it in the past. And I would really like to see this commission, the staff, to try to get whatever it takes, a forum together with the landfill authority. I know the county landfill is made up of a number of townships and the city. The city is the biggest force in it, because I don't know what the percentage is, but we're probably half of it, or something like that. But anyhow, let's see what we can do on this. And maybe we got to pay a buck or two to do it, instead of just throwing it in the landfill. I'm sure a number of you can probably recall, ten or fifteen, maybe twenty years ago, there was an ad on TV, and it was a Native American standing there with a tear in his eye, as people just kept destroying the earth. So let's see what we can do.
Thank you.
Virginia Killo, 1710 Harborview Drive, Marquette. I'm here to talk about the glass recycling, too. I care about recycling, I know our whole community cares. We've been recycling for many decades, all of my adult life, maybe fifty years. Now, we have a decision that says, "No, it doesn't matter. Just throw it in the landfill. Put it in your garbage." It doesn't sit well. I know it doesn't sit well with any of us. I know the city was blindsided by this decision. I'm here to ask you to get to the bottom of it, and please help this community find some acceptable options. I know that that is your intention. Glass is infinitely recyclable. It is not consumed or degraded. It uses less energy and pollutes less than manufacturing new glass. And glass is made out of sand. But we're running out of sand. The world is running out of sand, as you know. Sixteen-page article. Sand is used for everything: building, roads, all kinds of construction, all around the world. They're building countries out of it. We're running out. But glass could be used. Recycled glass could be used as an aggregate in these building materials. So new markets for glass are appearing. Some of the questions that I have, in researching this, I found more questions than answers. What are the legal obligations by contract of the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority and Waste Management to handle recycling? Are they meeting them? Are they high enough? What percentage of the collected recycling that goes to the landfill is actually recycled? How long has it been that glass hasn't been recycled? How can we cleanly and efficiently collect recyclables and maximize our recycling efforts? That's a big question. I know Waste Management is having problems collecting that recycling because of contamination issues. It's getting more and more difficult to recycle here. It should not be. People are frustrated. I hope we'll find some solutions. I have a feeling this is just the beginning of the exploration. By the way, you can still take glass inside at Waste Management. They do take it to Wisconsin. I'm told that they do crush it there before it goes into a landfill, but at least it's not in our landfill. And glass taken to our landfill should be crushed, if it is to be buried there, to save dead space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Amy Moss, and I live at 322 East Michigan Street. I, too, am here to express my concern about the recycling. I grew up in a time in the UP where there was no recycling, and I know there still are many communities that don't recycle. I've also always considered Marquette kind of the leader in many areas, and recycling, I think, is one of them. There are still many areas that don't recycle in the UP. I moved from Emmett County, who has, you know, a top-notch recycling facility. You can go to a number of parking lots in that area, in the city of Potaski, and just drop off your recycling at any time, in addition to the curbside recycling. So I'm here today, you know, mainly to express my concern, express my interest in learning more, and moving forward as a community, to figure out what our options are. I think there are many of us that if there were a cost attached, it's better than putting it in the landfill. We're also teaching our children what's acceptable. And I would hope that, in the time that we're in, we move forward in recycling all items, rather than move backward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Cheverito, to speak on items five and six. These are my opinions, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. A major blow has befallen us, which will severely impact our meetings. I never thought it mattered much who chaired the meetings until Mr. Baldini assumed the chair. While he didn't tend to vote in my favor, he ran all three of his meetings more smoothly than anyone in twenty years. In fact, I'd planned to tell him publicly. His ability to facilitate our meetings left me feeling surprisingly relaxed afterward, compared to the previous years of meetings that lumbered along, waiting for the chair to catch up, or the meetings run by chairs that were so impersonal, they put our residents on edge. The difference that Mr. Baldini's professionalism made was likely noticed by everyone who watches commission meetings. He'll be sorely missed. Now the audience is left with the sensation of having enjoyed something special for a short time, only to return to the status quo after just one short month. I'm honored to have recommended Mr. Baldini for the mayoral seat, although many of us still feel we should choose our own mayor. The trouble is, there's no one left on this board who possesses those attributes, except maybe the newest member, who hasn't had time to prove herself, other than on December 18th, when she spoke to the manager through a resident's entire citizen comment regarding a safety matter, no less. Of note, the candidates who mentioned the preservation of Pitnick Rocks and Shyrus Park as priorities, as had city staff and residents who are more familiar with that area than anyone on this board. The fact that the interests and urgent need are there, according to many parties, is not subject to opinion, yet this board waits idly for the next storm to obliterate more. In fact, the boulevard was recently closed again. Way back on June 28th, 2004, the board heard, quote, "The chain link fence along Coast Guard Road is finally gone, yet the worst section along the lakeshore still remains. For seven years, the Coast Guard has been asked to open the north end to the public who owns it. We've deserved access to portions not integral to Coast Guard operations or security." November 12th, 2007, the chair held up his map comparing the size of the two Coast Guard properties. Then came the newspaper article entitled, "It's ours." I knew these were deceptions, not because I have psychic powers, but I'd already learned from having endured ten years in here. Many people who would have enjoyed Lighthouse Park died, while our board members floundered, including current members. Mr. Plourd mentioned this wasn't the bunch that was on board when the deal was cut, but failed to address why so much procrastination occurred during this current regime. Take your time, even procrastinate for a few years, but complete that fence removal and trail location by, let's say, 2012 at the latest? 2012. Any later, and this board hasn't the case to cry on. Details on our December 18th Lighthouse Park meeting to follow.
Hello, Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in Marquette. First, I came in kind of late, so is number seven still number seven, adopting the procedure? Okay, I'd like to speak on that when it comes up. But first off, welcome, Ms. Smith, to the commission, to all who participated in the last elections. Please, welcome, and thank you for your input and your concerns. I hope the board takes the time to itemize the nine different criticisms and concerns that those candidates presented to you. Now, on another note, the real note, I guess, for tonight, is I came up here the last couple of years talking about the snow plowing in my driveway, basically, but that's my personal issue. My neighbors, the elderly, four neighbors who are immediately around me, all have the same service I have, which is the gentleman next door. He is a snow thrower. He comes around and cleans up the snow that falls or is pushed into our driveways. I don't say this because it's an annoyance, or that it costs me money, or that he has to do it for four different houses, and it takes him nearly two hours to do all of us. I say this because I get a parking ticket for parking in the middle of the street, or at least not the middle, but parking on the street in the middle of the night, and yet the snowplows come by and push me in when I'm home for lunch. So this gentleman pushes out the four different houses at lunchtime, so that I can come back to work in the city of Marquette, which also has a huge snow pile and snowbanks along all of their main commercial district. So you, as a commission, please hear my call yet again for the third or fourth year, that the snow that banks up on the commercial districts in our city restricts any passenger from getting out of the car. So if you're on a date, you can't actually park in front of the restaurant, because there's nowhere for that door to open, or for that person to get out successfully and safely, might I add. This is all a safety matter. It's not about being annoyed by the snow. It's about saying, "We live in a city that gets a lot of snow. What do we do about it?" And apparently, we just tell people to walk on it. I got stuck coming in on Berega Ave., right now, tonight. My car got stuck on Berega Ave., right out in front of the police station and the city municipal building. That is the state of our union. Please, address that. I yield back my time, but I look forward to speaking to you on number seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to close this portion of public comment. We're going to move to presentations, of which we have two tonight. Our first presentation is the UP Children's Museum Guardian of the Quarter, which would be, she is Ava Larson. Ava, if I could meet you at the side podium. Okay, Ava is in seventh grade at Bothwell. Her parents are John and Laura Tykman, in the back. Ava, as I've been told, is a good student, respectful of others, and valued for your volunteer work that you do at the Children's Museum. I could tell more, but I have Mr. James Edwards here, who will tell even more than I can tell. Jim, would you care to? At first, and who would be your bodyguards here?
This is Georgia Hummel and Bria Larson.
Georgia and Bria? And they are friends, relatives?
My sister and friend, yeah.
Friends, okay, good. Well, we're glad they're here. Jim, you got a few words?
I have a story about Ava that happened once at the Children's Museum when we were face painting. There was this one time when we were face painting, and Ava, this kid asks for a dragon. So she does a dragon. The face paint was okay for her abilities, but this kid's just walking around with this full face, full of like red, when most kids just have things like little butterflies or something on their cheek. When he has like a full-faced red dragon.
My turn, my turn. The story I heard was that all the other girls' face painting was great, but nobody liked Ava's painting. We call this the Guardian of the Quarter Award, so we're here every three months. Nine months or six months ago, it was Bria's turn. Big Sister here is looking at that and thinking, huh? And I challenged Ava, six months ago, that, we also call this award a leadership award. And so I challenged her to step up, and to be the leader, and not come just because the team of girls came together. You can imagine, this is part of the squad. But sometimes, she then started to turn up on her own, and to start to run the museum, and to make it ready for young children to play. So I'm really proud of her for stepping out of what was normal and what was ordinary, and being her own better self. And for that reason, Mr. Mayor, I really commend her for being a leader. Thank you.
Well, Ava, the city of Marquette is proud for what you do. We like that you're a volunteer, because volunteers is what makes the community. And we'd like to present you with this Youth Leadership Award. I'll read it. It's presented to Ava Larson, the UP Children's Museum, Outstanding Guardian of the Quarter. So I'm going to give you this. We appreciate what you do. We have one other prize. This is prepared by the chairman of our Sweet Bake Committee, who is Commissioner Reynolds. She was up at five o'clock baking all day today, and she especially wanted you to have this. It's safe to eat, if you care to, just don't do it before bedtime. But thank you, we appreciate what you do, and we hope you continue to do more. Your friends, thank you, thank you for coming. Is there anything you'd like to say? Nothing? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Our second presentation of the evening is going to be by Chairman David Brooks of the Board of Review. Dave, if we could have you at the side podium, please.
My name is David Brooks. I live on 1771 West Avenue, and I'm the chair of the Board of Review for the city of Marquette. They asked me to make a presentation again here, and I'm going to see if I can get this thing working the right way here. Yeah. That's what I was hitting. Ah. I hit Enter last time. I noticed on the first slide you had up there, before the meeting started, it said we needed one member for the Board of Review. We actually, as of February 1st, we have two people that will be done with the Board of Review, so we really need two people on the Board of Review. So if you're available, you know, somebody who is, who would make a good addition to the Board of Review, we could really use your help. It's hard to operate with three people trying to take in all the information and put it together and do the work that we need to do. So would appreciate any considerations from you. We'll see if we can. We're set up by a charter. In the state, first of all, requires it, also with the city charter, Section 484. And we listen to the people of Marquette, when there's a tax question, they feel the taxes are high. We've actually had one who thought their taxes were too low, and we were glad to talk to them, too. But normally, it's, you know, a question about the taxes, and how they're being charged, and why they're being charged. We have a number of meetings per year. We have, in March, early March, we have just a meeting that we come together to organize. Then in March, on the, it'll be the 12th and the 13th this year, we hear appeals from the people that are looking to appeal their tax, or have questions about their taxes. And then on the July 17th and December 11th, we also have meetings to cover some other areas of the taxes. The city assessor, as you may know, is Miles Anderson, and Ellen Britton is city appraiser, Amanda Gerber is the assessing technician. And at the various meetings, we can hear different things. At the first meeting, the one that's in march, is the most important, if you have tax questions, because there's some things that we can review, and during the year, once that time has passed, there's things that we can no longer review, as far as the taxes. So keep that in mind, if you know, if you're looking at the taxes. We go through a lot of these, I think, you kind of get an idea here. Obviously, different from the one I had earlier. These are the components of the taxable values in the city of Marquette. Personal property, commercial, industrial, and the residential. This is how the taxes are divided at this time. Any questions? This is the SED, including the Advolorum and Special Act Taxes. And again, how they are divided: commercial, industrial, residential, and personal property. This is what it was in 2017. By parcels, these are the parcels according to the count. Residential, sixty percent of our parcels in the city of Marquette. And as you can see, the rest there, the ones that say REF Personal and REF Real, those are references, those are ones that are changing for some reason, they're in process, or it could be that somebody has gone out of business, and there's a personal tax that's kind of pending, trying to work things through, and so that's what that includes. We have 521 parcels in the city of Marquette that are tax-exempt. That's a lot, for our little city. And Board of Review, these are the number of petitions we've had over the number of years. Back in 2010, we had fifty-one, but as you can see, it gradually increased up to 180 in 2014. Came back down a little bit, and we're thankful for that, because 180 petitions were a lot to do in the time that we're allowed, you know, are allotted to do it. So it's pretty comprehensive. Basically, this is what the Board of Review... Basically, this is what the Board of Review does. We're between the taxpayer and the assessor. We're trying to help you to, or help the city and the assessor, the taxpayer, we're trying to balance things out so that everybody's paying their fair share, if you will. And so that's our responsibility. Has to be a measured way, it has to be under the laws of the state, the city. We have to be very cautious in how we, where things are changed, or where we make adjustments. And it's always nice to have people on the board who are, have been in real estate, or who have been in mortgage lenders, working in mortgage or banks. Sometimes, again, the workload is very heavy. Sometimes it's pretty simple. But either way, it's an important part of the city and what they do, and you know, what we do with the city, or with the people of the city. Are there any questions that you have, kind of quickly, that I might be able to answer? Do you understand what we're trying to do is, and when you come to us, we're like you, we're part of the city. We're, you know, we each are property owners, homeowners, in the City of Marquette, and we're here to help things, to get, to make sure they work out fair. And that's our responsibility, to be that balance between the assessor and the citizens of the city. So is there, did you have any questions?
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Less of a question than just a comment, and that's to thank you for what you personally do and what the entire Board does. This is heavy lifting, when you're at the Board of Review, when you're making decisions on taxes, and who's paying what, and how to do it fairly. And it is a difficult job, and it is one that is critical to the city operating. And when you think about all of the citizens committees we have, this is one of the, I would say, the premier committee along with planning, in terms of really, really providing an absolutely vital service to the city. So if anyone is thinking about joining a committee, I would highly recommend the Board of Review, because you will learn more and contribute more to our city than I think you can imagine. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And to anyone who is considering also, you need to know that everybody works together, and if you don't understand something, somebody's there to answer it for you. You know, I've sold real estate a long, long time ago, and have forgotten most of the information about selling it. So when I came in, I came in as just a citizen of the city. And as Chair now, I've gained so much information over the four years, three and a half, or three years so far, excuse me, I've gained so much information. And people are there, we want to work together, we want to make this work, and I appreciate your comment on that. It's easy, it's easier, if you will, when we have to talk to somebody about their tax on the house that they live in, than when you get to a point of what happens with places like the plant, the power plant, or the hospital that's coming in, where, you know, there's different tax types of things. And those become very complicated sometimes. And when we can't answer the questions, or we don't give, if you will, what they're looking for, they have other options, like the hospital, or the power plant, or whatever, would have options to go to different places, to go higher up than us, if you will. But it's work, but it's worthwhile.
Commissioner Smith, you had a question?
Thank you, David, for your work on the Board of Review. I was wondering if you could tell us how you became involved, what made you want to get involved, and maybe some of how your other board members got involved as well.
I twisted my arm. Fred O'Malley asked me, and he said, you know, we don't have anybody out in the northwest area of Marquette, so why don't you, why don't you get involved with us? And I hesitated, I said, okay, I'm not sure I have the answers for you, but I'd be glad to. It's a matter of, and we try and do that, we try to go to people, say, you know, I think you'd be good on the Board, you know, but it's a matter of, it's a matter of, I think I desire to serve the city. I love Marquette, we've been gone, we were gone for a number of years from Marquette. It's so good to be home since 2006, you know? And although I'm not from here originally, I consider this my home.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Brooks, you mentioned 521 exempt parcels in the city. A quick breakdown, where are they?
I don't have, of course, those in front of me, but they would be, the old hospital, of course, was tax exempt. Churches, schools, parks, owned by the city, all those parcels are still parts of the city, but they're tax exempt.
I got you. And 521 is a high number for a city of this size?
It's, well, it seems to be, to me, but there's, you know, again, we have a lot of the university, they have quite a few parcels of property, and that makes a difference, too, you know?
Sure.
But it'd be nice if they were all taxpayers, you'd make it a little bit easier for all of us, you know, but, you know, that's not going to happen.
One last question, you have like, at least five meetings a year.
Yes.
How long is like, the longest meeting? Probably the March meeting?
The March meeting, on the first day that we have the meeting, it is from 9 till noon, I believe, and then right around 1:30 to 4:30 is when the actual people can come in and talk about their concerns. And then on the second day, it's from 1 o'clock until 9 o'clock, with, we have a dinner break. But it depends on how many parcels there are, or how many people are, you know, making requests. Sometimes, I mean, we work quite a bit afterwards. And either, a few people may come in, and as soon as they're gone, we're going through the paper, trying to get them, you know, figured out and find out what's going on.
Well, the reason I ask is just because, although it is a serious committee, making important decisions, it's not like it's every other week you're meeting.
No, 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 no.
So hopefully someone will be enticed to join your Board.
The March one is the hardest one, and it depends on the number, like I say, when there was 180, whatever year that was, 180 petitions, we spent a little bit more time on that one. But when there was 80 or 104 or something, it's considerably less. But you still, you have a period of time when people come in to give their information, and for us to sit back and say, okay, let's make this decision, and we can get them done mostly during those hours. But when it's 180, it's a little different, it takes a little extra effort.
Sure, sure. Okay, Commissioners, seeing nothing further. Mr. Brooks, thank you very much, very informative, and you do provide a valuable service to the city. We thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you very much, and please tell your friends to join us.
Okay, next we come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
A motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Because there's a resolution involved, this is going to require a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plourd?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campana?
Yes, that passes 6-0. Next we move to new business. We have eight, or excuse me, four items. The first item is, the city clerk conducts election for mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind each Commissioner again, that after your vote, please sign the back of your ballot, and they will be available for review for anyone interested in my office.
First, we have Mr. Verito, who would like to speak to us. Three minutes.
Frank J. Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. Thank you for allowing us a comment opportunity for this important item. The library copy of our agenda packet is missing a cover sheet for this item, making it difficult to discern which angle to prepare this comment from. Past urging to include a cover sheet for each item has been ignored by our manager and the Commissioners who prepare our agendas. They seem fine with letting us fumble through the packet, looking for pages that aren't there. Such an ongoing lack of responsiveness plays a big part in this comment, in that it bolsters my assertion that no one who's currently on this Board is qualified to serve as Mayor, except maybe the newest member, whom most of us know little about. The position requires a leader who's a good listener, who can absorb what's transpiring, and who can orate her or his words smoothly. Because Mr. Baldini proved that a person who'd never run a city commission meeting could wing it on his first attempt, we ought to search out a new member, preferably another woman, who's also capable of hitting the ground running, unless enough people feel that Ms. Smith could fill that role. At least three current members lack the maturity to serve as Mayors. Ms. Reynolds is not one of those, but she hasn't participated enough for us to discern one way or another, as is the case with our new member, who hasn't had time to prove herself. Many of us feel that Mr. Campana is not fit for Mayor, although we realize he's kindly filling in tonight under the worst of circumstances. So there's no personal attack here, other than that Mr. Campana was the only current member who voted against providing a closing comment opportunity. We need someone with more of a public orientation than that, which we've missed in here for over four years now. Public speaking skills are essential to being a Mayor, even in a hamlet like ours, not just to run our meetings smoothly, but also for dedications and ceremonies at which a polished speaker presents our city in a more professional light. This should not imply that I'm a polished off-the-cuff speaker by any means. If no interested woman is currently suited for the job, perhaps the attorney could run our meetings, or someone like the man who puts on the Blues Fest, or maybe the new member to be selected possesses that talent. Actually, the residents of Marquette should be afforded the chance to elect our own Mayor. This Board is in sick need of a change, rather than sticking with the status quo, which has only turned the public away from participating in the process. Running our meetings is considered one of the Mayor's most critical roles, so please take ample time, up to the 60-day limit, to assure that the best qualified individual is chosen, especially being that Mr. Baldini's footsteps are hard to follow.
City Clerk, did you wish to proceed?
Thank you.
The vote was 4 votes to 2. And if you'd like to meet me elsewhere, you can.
By the flag?
Done as a climber, too.
Huh?
City of Dunn as a climber, too.
Yeah.
And if you'd please write hand with me, I, David Campana.
I, David Campana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of?
The Office of Mayor of the City of Marquette, according to the best of my ability.
The Office of the Mayor of Marquette, according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, just here. I'll give you that one, you can fill that in, I'll take the other one. And that's, that'll be your original.
That's mine.
I just want to say thank you again to the Commissioners. I appreciate your confidence in the vote. I think we got a good group of Commissioners, we got a lot of projects ahead of us coming up in the next year, and we need this good group that we have. So again, I thank you. Now, we have, we need to elect the Mayor Pro Tem.
Your election did create a vacancy in the Pro Tem position, so you should conduct that election now.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any problem if we conduct that election now? Seeing no objection, we're going to do an election for Mayor Pro Tem.
Again, please remember to sign the back of your ballots. 2.
City Clerk, could I interrupt? Mr. Verito, I believe you want to speak on item number 6, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
We've kind of like bypassed that, you still want to speak?
Wasn't there a cover sheet for number 6?
No, it's the oath of office. It's the oath.
Do you want to speak on the oath of office?
No, I wanted to speak on adopt the procedure to fill the vacancy.
That's 7.
Yeah, I must apologize to the Commission.
Okay, so you will be on for number 7?
That's 7, that's an oversight, I'm ready to open that. Thank you.
I'm sure you're prepared. Okay, so we're going to do the oath of office.
You'll do the oath of office. Fred, if you'll join me.
This is for the Marines now.
I'm actually saving the city money, because I still have your nameplate.
What a deal.
Always looking to save the city money.
I, Frederick Stonehouse.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge duties.
Of the Office of Mayor Pro Tem.
Of the Office of Mayor Pro Tem.
Of the City of Marquette.
Of the City of Marquette.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
I'll take signature, I have it on pen, great.
Okay, next on the agenda, item number 7, which is adopt the procedure to fill vacancy on the city commission. City Clerk, could you give us the back, no, what?
Certainly, I just have a question. Ron? Should we call a new rule? Okay.
Background?
Background, thank you, Mayor. A city commission vacancy was created on December twenty-sixth, following the passing of Mayor Tom Baldini. Under the provisions of the Marquette City Charter, the city commission has sixty days in which to fill a vacancy via appointment. As the commission made an appointment in December of two thousand seventeen to fill a vacancy, staff is recommending the board follow the process established at that time. In that process, applications were made both online and at the city's website, and in person at the city clerk's office, and a timeframe was established for interested parties to return completed applications. Following the application deadline, completed applications and related materials were disseminated to city commission for review. At a subsequent meeting, the commission then provided applicants an opportunity to speak and made an appointment to fill the vacancy. In order to be appointed, an individual must meet all eligibility requirements stipulated by the city charter. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation: Direct the city clerk to make city commission application forms available to the public and to accept applications from interested parties until the close of business on Friday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, and proceed with the appointment of a new city commissioner at the February twelfth regular meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Two people requesting.
Mr. Verito?
Frank Jeff Verito, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions, and again, my apologies for accidentally observing time for the wrong item. Here's an example of why it's helpful to provide a cover sheet. This makes on-target comments easier to prepare, and no time was wasted fumbling through the packet. On our last go-around, I felt that the commission made a sound decision to accept applications for the open seat, instead of choosing the fourth highest vote-getter. As explained previously, each situation is different, for example, the timing, the availability of the applicant, and the length of the terms. The application process ought to be repeated, although doing so is not as important this time, because we undertook the process only one short month ago. Applications are recommended, though. December eighth eleventh, in filling our empty seat, the commission wisely drew names to determine the candidate's order of speaking. The voting process was also sound. Miraculously, only two rounds were needed, instead of us being here all night, which may not always be the case. Improvements to the process are advised, however. Let the candidates speak before the public, so we can comment on what we just heard. Few of us, if any, knew all of the candidates. We need more than just applications to base our comments on. The candidates also deserve more than three minutes to speak. Filling these seats is too important and too involved for three minutes to suffice, especially most recently, when it was the only business item on that night's agenda. The lack of any commission discourse before the vote was disappointing. I sought to learn what attributes and drawbacks our members based their votes and decisions on, not just how they voted. Entertaining commission discussion, board members, and everyone for that matter, will always pick out different subtleties from what they just heard. Entertaining a commission discussion lessens the chances that a flawed person will be chosen, and can also emphasize attributes that can help us realize which candidate is best suited for the job.
Mr. Ludenberger, you wish to address us?
Yeah, thank you. Matt Ludenberger, fourteen oh six, Garfield Ave., here in Marquette. I stand before you because I, I am concerned about the procedure that you're about to follow. It's been no secret, I came up last time and asked you to consider the three electorates who were passed over during the November election for the December seat for Ms. Smith's spot. At the same time, it's your choice. I'm also a firm believer that if I'm going to say something online, I say it in person as well. And this is what I mean by, sorry, I'm going to take this time, please, my clock just ran out. Thanks. I'm going to take this time to say that what I said online during the previous year, I call this the Baldini Rule, and it's no disrespect to Mr. Baldini, and I honestly planned this, say this to him at a time like today, because of all the business I've had to deal with, I couldn't make the meetings. You were about to enshrine in Marquette folklore how to fill open seats, and for a year position, I had the issue that, hey, an appointment seems appropriate from the existing candidates. This is a three-year term. This isn't a simple one, this isn't a, and as Mr. Stonehouse pointed out, it might be an automatic renewal. So this is something that I see as the option you have in the Baldini Rule. And I say that only because he mentioned he was on the committee to set this up. So we're in a spot now where, for one-year terms, or less than what you would normally elect commissioner term, I can accept the appointment process. I really can, that, I might have said my thing, but I really can accept that you guys choose who you want to work with for the la, or the rest of a year, or maybe eighteen-month term. Anything longer than eighteen months, we the electorate, or we the citizens, get to choose who sits in those seats. Please consider that. What is the cost? And I mean this to the, to the city clerk, what is the cost of a special election? I've never heard a number, I just heard people say it's expensive. Well, if it's less than a hundred thousand dollars, I say go for it. You each got a raise last year. If it's less than the cost of your raises combined, I say go for it. If it's less than the cost of what it takes to put in a roundabout, I say go for it. It's our decision to fill a spot for three years. That's the only reason I'm up here right now, is it's a three-year term. So please consider that. This is a longer duration, and it's no longer an interim duration, it's an official seating in the seat. Please, thank you, and thank you for restarting my clock.
Okay, commissioners, we have a motion. Commissioner Plard?
I move that we direct the city clerk to make city commission application forms available to the public, and to accept applications from interested parties until the close of business on Friday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, and proceed with the appointment of a new city commissioner at the February twelfth regular meeting.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Plard?
Thank you, Mr. Ludenberger, for your comments. I assure you that a general election was considered, we discussed it among ourselves, whatever we could, and it was, we, a lot of us had the same thoughts, but I'll let the city clerk answer your question. City clerk, what is the cost of a general election?
Upwards of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Twenty-two thousand dollars. When we looked at it, we thought, well, the general, the laws of the state of Michigan require that elections can only be held February, May, August, and November. That's it, it's the only chance we have. So, looking at this, we thought, well, if we had an election, February would be too soon to give people an opportunity to campaign. May would be the next viable election, and that's at a time when a lot of people simply are not available. So, yes, it's less than a roundabout, the cost of the election, however, when you look at the amount of turnout that probably could be expected in May, we had to say to ourselves, no, we just can't do it. For myself personally, I just can't do it. And I, believe me, I thought it over many, many, many hours. What you're saying is not offline at all. I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. However, we did establish a procedure, and that has some importance to us, has some importance to me. It was a procedure that we thought was a good procedure, and another thing I think that people need to understand is, across the board, all the people that talked to me about appointment, the appointment, said they liked the procedure, the way we did it, and the candidates that came up were outstanding, and we picked a very, very good candidate. So it's a, it's a good procedure, as far as the people who have talked to me, and there's quite a few people that have talked to me about it, it's a good procedure along those lines. And so then I'm backing the procedure, and that's why I made the motion, and I will support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier, anything?
Mayor Baldini worked very hard on this. He called us all, began our suggestions, he sat down with Mr. Kiefer, our city lawyer, and worked out all the politics. He had some great ideas, and the attorney said, okay, great ideas, but we have to follow the rules and make sure it's legal. So he worked very hard on this. I think it's well-respected to him, and we did it great the first time, to follow the same procedure, to fill his vacancy. I'm sure that's what he would want, and it's just the best way to do it, you know? We all looked at your applications, we looked at it very hard, we looked at everybody's thing and talked about it, we didn't get, we asked Commissioner Baldi, should we have a work session to talk about this? And he said, no, we can't do that, make everything public. So we said, okay, make everything public, everybody gets a chance to talk all they want, we look at the applications, and then, that day, we get a chance to hear them say it, and then vote on it, however long it takes, we'll get it done. So it's a great procedure, I agree. Mr. Plard, we just have to do with that and go by the Baldini Rule, I think it's a good rule.
Commissioner Plard?
Your Honor, I'd just like to add one more comment. Getting back to the idea of an election, if we had, if we had, if we decide to do an election, we wouldn't be able to seat a new commissioner until after the election in May. This procedure allows us to seat a new commissioner in February, which we think, with all the things that are going on right now, at least I think personally, that's very, very important.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse? Commissioner Stonehouse?
It's an interesting problem. I know that I look very hard at the idea of an election, because I do believe in turn that, as Mr. Ludenberger said, it is a strong opportunity for the public to speak, to present their thoughts, and actually vote, and that's certainly what we're all about. But all of the difficulties that Mr. Plude talked to are exactly correct. All of the issues with financial, I mean, twenty-two thousand dollars spent for that election, that election not occurring until May, you know, literally by state law, not being able to seat that commissioner until following the election in May. That's, that's a problem, and it's a problem in time delay, and being able to get somebody on board this commission to help us, and to do what we need commissioners to do. So it's almost, I hate to say flip of a coin, because there's pros and cons to both sides of it, but I really commend Commissioner Plude for talking about this, so the public has a better idea of understanding that there's a number of issues involved with this. It is, nothing is black and white, everything becomes a shade of gray, in terms of what's the best thing to do for everybody. And that's what I wrestle with, and if we had determined as a commission, if that's the way we want to do it by election, I'll certainly support that. If we decide by vote that we want to do it by selection, I'll certainly support that, but it's difficult, and I think it just piques back the window a little bit of some of the decisions that the commission wrestles through on every meeting, and generally without the public interest, because it's some esoteric piece of government that we're trying to get straight. So thank you for listening to my little soliloquy, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'd also like to point out, personally, I'm confident in this process, because this is what's dictated in our city charter. Till you change a charter, we have to abide by it. And, as I bump into people on the street, and as I do get phone calls, of course, you probably only hear the good news, but almost the vast majority of people were in favor of the process that we chose to select a new commissioner, so I feel confident that we're doing the right thing. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, I also had many people talk to me over the last couple, well, last two weeks about this, and most of the time I wasn't ready to talk about it, because replacing Tom seems impossible, but I do think that, out of all the conversations I had, I think only one person thought it was deserving to go to a special election. Out of the rest of those, they agreed with our procedure, thought we were doing the right thing, and doing it right in Tom's honor. And as Commissioner Plard, I thought about this a lot, too, like, a special election, it's three years, it seems, it's a lot, we're putting a lot on us to pick somebody for the next three years, but I think that we can do that with the type of quality that we had last time, of all the people we had, so I will support this as well.
Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to add that I had a lot of people speak with me about this as well, and the overarching theme was that people know what to expect now, they know how to apply, how to go on the city website, how to express interest, and I think we are going to have more interested parties if we do do an appointment process, even than we did last time because of all the publicity. So, I mean, I think it's a good thing in the long run, get some new names in the hat.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments? Seeing none, we're going to vote on this? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Our last new business item of the evening is an easement agreement for signage. City Clerk, could you give us the background of that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background: As part of the roundboat construction project at the intersection of Presque Isle and Fair Avenues, the city acquired property from Northern Michigan University directly in front of their invent at NMU building. The signage was required to be taken down for the construction project, and the university is now looking to replace the sign in the same location. Because the location was acquired by the city, the easement agreement is required for this to take place. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation: Approve the attached easement agreement for signage as it relates to placing the invent at NMU sign within city right-of-way, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign and execute the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we approve the attached easement agreement for signage as it relates to placing the event at NMU sign within city right-of-way, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign and execute the agreement.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Discussion, any? Commissioner Plard? Commissioner Reynolds? Anywhere else? Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Passes six zero. We now come to our last public comment of the evening. Again, a chance for residents to address the commission. You've got three minutes, we need name and home address. Going to open public comment, does anybody wish to address the commission?
Hello, my name is Margaret Brum, and I live at four oh four East Magnetic, Marquette, Michigan. Two matters to address the commission, one is an issue, ongoing issue of public health and safety, and the other one addresses the opening on the commission. My comments tonight are being directed to Mr. Angeli and the police officer, who I can't read the name because of the sign. I was walking at Picnic Rocks today with my dog, enjoying being outside, and as you can tell, we got a lot of cold last week, and the shelf ice has started to form. And I remember, Mr. Angeli, the first time I spoke about the concerns at Picnic Rocks, you made the comment that the park is closed, and I have observed, quite rightly, that the road is blocked off, very clearly. But to quote Paul Revere, "One if by land, and two if by sea." There is no signage alerting a person coming in from the water, and we have surfers who go out there, and there's absolutely no signage on any of the land approaches to Picnic Rocks. And I'm sorry to say, I've been the one being dragged there by my dog, who has favorite trails. And today, walking there, I'm not making this up, and this is on YouTube, I took a video, and my, you find my videos on YouTube, my code name is Impala2511, and for the benefit of the clerk, that's Impala2511. There were footprints on that most delicate of ice, more than one set of footprints. I'm not making this up, and I'm not trying to be a nervous Nellie about this. There's people walking on the brand-new ice near Picnic Rocks. So you have two things in mind. First of all, it's not the same shoreline, so you don't know where you can put your feet, where you've always could. And second of all, we all know that after a hard freeze, the ice goes, and then, today, it was thirty-two degrees and the melting had started. And I looked out there, and I saw those footprints, and all I could think of is, oh no, I don't want another story in the Mining Journal about somebody going out to take a beautiful picture and ended up in the lake. And I apologize, I don't mean to be an alarmist, but I look at that lake, it's my go-to place for a beautiful day, and I saw footprints, more than one set, and I'm not being, I mean, and again, I hope I saw it on the video, but I can, you know, it's the Picnic Rocks place. So that is an ongoing concern about alerting people that it's not the same shoreline, plus there is a sign leaning up against a tree, and when that thing falls, it's going to hurt somebody. So I'm directing those Marie- those remarks. And my second remarks, and I don't have enough time to say, Mr. Baldini was my teacher in government, along with Mr. Al Hopman. And if you have one teacher you remember from high school, I remember Mr. Baldini. And when I saw the news that he was no longer with us, I took it personally. So based on your procedure, I'm going to be applying again, and I'm going to try for this again because of him. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in Marquette, Michigan. Just a quick note on the, on the procedure. Just want to say, the city charter gives you an option to do one or the other. And if it costs less than a dollar per person in the city of Marquette to have a special election, I think waiting three months is plenty of time if you're going to fill a spot for three years. So I stand by my position, and I'm, I know I'm the opposition here, and, you know, I'm yelling into a hurricane. But anyways, to my point that I come up tonight, I, I've been working hard on a plan that I've been calling Mars University to help revitalize and reuse the power plant from West, or We Energies on Presque Isle and the hospital here in the city of Marquette. I would like to work with a number of entities. The VA is one of them because they have explosive experience. The invent NMU, because of their inventions. Again, I mention these places because I, I do not want them to see me and this procedure or this, you know, proposal as a competitor to any one of these city entities. The, sorry, the high school, Ms. Simmons, who works the Makerspace Place. I want to give her a bigger and better auditorium and planetarium. What I come to you today for is to, one, start the public input period and ask for a work session where this can be presented, can be spoken about off the record, and we can throw out and communicate different ideas with all the different groups that I just mentioned, plus some. I heard Mr. Snyder from the Chamber of Commerce would work with people who want to bring in companies. I would like to do that. I would also like to, Waste Management, to let us utilize the glass, and we recycle the glass, because this university needs a lot of glass for a lot of solar panels. We have a shipping area, so you could ship cobalt directly from the Sioux over here. Now, I come up to you with this prop here, and I say this because this is the first step. I would like to launch a model rocket campaign. We have no real hobby store here in the city of Marquette. But at the same time, I ask for the legal, I guess, permission to go over 100 feet. This rocket here goes up to 1,000 feet. I have one at home that is a two-stage, and it goes up to 2,000 feet. So a lot of this question period now that I come up to you for is to ask, can I have permission to fly something higher than the helicopters fly? What is the procedure that I should go through if I would like to just do it on a Saturday afternoon? Are there parks that I can and cannot use? Are there places I can and cannot talk about? If I would like to work with the high school, do they need special procedures? All of this is an introduction to the idea that I call Mars University, and I wish to speak about it more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Jeff Verdo, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Our December 18th work session on Lighthouse Park was poorly attended considering the importance of this parcel. Perhaps people lost hope over the years that no effort was made, except by one person, to expedite the process. The consultant's recommendations are encouraging in that no damage is currently planned to the park's natural features. How the buildings are used isn't as important to me. However, no person or family should be allowed to rent housing on the property. The location is too highly sought after. It wouldn't be fair to the rest of us. Maybe the former captain's quarters could be occupied by the Arts and Culture Center to facilitate the many artists and photographers who use the lighthouse as the subject of their work. All the buildings ought to be put to public use. Keep in mind that we haven't gained anything, but only sacrificed an acre of awesome shoreline for the Coast Guard relocation. Both parcels were provided by nature in pristine condition from almost the beginning of time. A big concern is a parking lot that consumes most of the buffer between our park and the water plant. Similar advice was ignored at Lakeshore Site to the west of Shira's Park, with the result now evident for all to see. We love our filtration plant, but a buffer is needed to maximize the natural experience at Lighthouse Park. Shield our natural attributes from infrastructural ones. The consultant understands this philosophy, as affirmed when we spoke later. He promised to mention this at a subsequent meeting. We can add extra spaces to the north where bus unloading is proposed. Let's park buses perpendicular to the road to allow for safer debarkation. We can also improve and expand the existing lots, so long as the wooded buffer isn't compromised. Despite so much good in the plan, a lack of foresight went into prioritization by our consultant and staff liaison. They seemed incognizant of how delinquent this board's been in getting this project on track. A priority should be based on cost, safety, and how we can get our park available to the greatest number of people and uses in the shortest amount of time. We agree on the first priority to remove that awful, unneeded chain-link fence at the northwest corner. A few branches may need trimming to prevent fall hazards. This can be done inexpensively with no compromise to safety. Please remove the lights and cement footings as well. Mr. Campana and I wondered why the trail relocation wasn't a higher priority. We can provide a gravel trail until funds become available for pavement. Because the Art Street Extension is a lower priority because of cost, the relocation of the trail is imperative from a safety standpoint, as the road will receive much greater use. We must segregate non-motorized and vehicular traffic, and at the same time, enjoy the earliest possible use of a flat portion of the park we own. Of course, these two items were easily accomplishable years ago, had this board been cognizant of the public need and the public sacrifice that went into our acquisition of Lighthouse Park.
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Frazier.
Well, as we know, Mayor Baldini passed away. I heard the news from Mayor Campana. He told me about that. I said, "Boy, it's tough." I thought Tom pulled through. He's a tough old bird, and I thought he would pull through, but obviously, he didn't. We got, we dearly missed. We were friends for lunchtime, and my daughter got to know him. He was a great guy. We even went to his house for Halloween, and she got a kick out of seeing him. She just loved him. He was a great person, great to everybody. And it'd be dearly missed. It'd be good to, it's gonna be hard to find somebody that has as much political knowledge as he was. You know, I used to call him our local governor. I joked with people about that. My wife thought, "That's, that's not right." Then I heard at Tom's funeral, the political people saying the same thing. Everybody knew him as the governor. I mean, he was just a, he was so political, he knew everything. So it's gonna be hard to find somebody that much knowledge to replace him. But if we could apply, we're gonna look for somebody that'd be great. Jenna's been great for replacing Sarah. So somebody with at least some city knowledge, you know, maybe some other boards. There's other boards that there, I mean, I know people that are sort of in many boards that might be available, who knows? But, because some people say, you know, we knew nothing about the garbage disposal. The landfill didn't say anything to us about not taking glass. We had lots of the conversation. They said, we said, we asked them, Mayor Baldini, asked them, "What about recycling?" They said, "Oh, we can't recycle without Marquette." Marquette's our number-one recycler. We need to recycle. We can't do it without Marquette. And Eagle was willing to help them, you know, maybe redo their recycling, but they didn't want that. And they said, "We can't recycle it. Do it you, so stay with us." We said, "Okay." And now, obviously, they, they were taking glass before, and I guess from what they understand, what I understand, they've said, I could be wrong, but they crushed the glass and sprinkled it all over the landfill anyway. They're not just throwing the bottles, and they just crush it and sprinkle it all over. They didn't want to keep doing that. It's too much time for them. They decided, so that's, they're working on other alternatives. They said, "I saw the news, they're working on alternatives." I even asked them, "Find somebody else." There's gonna be somebody out there in the area that might want to get some for Sophia. And they never said a word to us at all. So it's just too bad that they came up to this and, you know, Eagle, they have a single stream dumpster in front of their shop. And I asked them, I said, "That single stream, you collect anything at your shop, where does that go?" "Well, that goes to, we pay Eagle to come pick that up, and it goes to Wisconsin." I said, "Oh, okay." They said, "Yeah, they, they do it better." But anything they pick up from the curb goes to the landfill. You know, that's just the way they work. And can't blame Waste Management, you know, that's the only place they can recycle at. So it is what it is. And as far as Presque Isle Plant, you know, we've talked about that. We've talked a little bit about that today. It's not closed 2019. We know that. And what's gonna happen after that, we don't know. There's lots of areas. We even, we had a meeting down Holland. They have an old coal plant, too. Still sitting there. There's no, you know, We Energies still owns the property, so there's no guarantee they're just gonna rip it up and tear it down right away. There's no guarantee. So it may be a long process. We don't know. I mean, there's lots on our property in the city that sat there for many years before doing anything with. So hopefully, they'll get some. I know the Brownfield Company is looking at it. A lot of people looked at it. It's a great spot, if it ever gets taken care of. So hopefully, gets up and done.
Commissioner Smith?
First, I just want to say congratulations to Mayor Campana and Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse. And secondly, being new on the commission this year was already going to be a bit of a challenge, but that's compounded by the fact that we've lost the leadership from Mayor Tom Baldini. During his visitation and funeral, I was completely blown away by the number of people he had impacted in his lifetime. I had no idea. I knew he was, you know, had a big impact in this community, but it was just incredible, the number of people he impacted. He was a wonderful educator. He was a true leader, and he was an inspiring public servant, something that I hope to live up to even in some small way. I know when big decisions are going to come up on city commission, I'm gonna have a voice in my head saying, "What would, how would Tom handle this? What would he do?" I just have one thing left to say is, I'm gonna paraphrase from Winnie the Pooh here, yes, Winnie the Pooh, "How lucky we are to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard." Rest in peace, Tom.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Tom Baldini, I can add little to the accolades that the papers have had and that certainly our mayor at the beginning of the meeting spoke to, as well as other commissioners. I can say that I met Tom when I was a student at Northern, and he was teaching at Marquette High School. And in the intervening years, too many to really think about, our paths continue to cross, and always in a very positive way. And of course, he and I had a little common interest in that Tom was the chairman of the International Joint Commission. The IJC managed the Great Lakes, quite literally. That was the interface commission between the United States and Canada for all things dealing with the lakes. And to have a resident of Marquette have that position, I thought was remarkable. Of course, my own interest in things, water, too, meshed directly with that. The one thing that it certainly points out to us is something we don't like to think about, I think, which is the fragility of life. That it happens quickly, it can happen right now, and it happens to those that we least suspect, and ourselves included. So that's something that certainly bears thinking about. The glass issue, I was not on the commission when that decision was made to go with Waste Management versus Eagle and that whole debate. I certainly support the decision to go with Waste Management. I did attend many of the meetings because they were public sessions, either public commission meetings or public work sessions. So I wanted to understand more about it. And that's the way you do it, is you attend those meetings. And one of the things that struck me, and I, I'm even reluctant to talk about this a little bit, is that the chairman of the Marquette Solid Waste Management Authority sat in on many of those meetings. And he knew exactly that glass was no longer going to be recycled. In fact, it has been suggested that they have not been recycling glass for several years. They've simply been grinding it and dumping it. So what does that tell you? What does that tell you to the respect of the public, of people that are in good faith, taking their recyclable product, and putting it in the proper waste stream to have it recycled, only to find out that it's not, that it's just going into the landfill in a ground form? I find that extremely, certainly disturbing. I can tell you, and I hope the manager will talk to this in greater depth, that the commission is looking deeper and deeper into how landfills work and our role within that of the Marquette landfill. The city is a customer of that facility. We own it in part because we have membership on the authority. But if they decide not to recycle something, we can't affect that. We can't say you must. That's their decision to make. If you're reading the national news and you're reading and Googling this up, you're finding out that the recycle across the country is in deep trouble. Because oil is cheap, who needs to recycle plastic? We can just squirt out more plastic. That's what they're doing. That there is very little market for glass in the great world. And of course, up here, we're at the end of the earth. So transportation charges are added on to whatever we choose to send somewhere. That's not an excuse for not doing it. That simply is an explanation that there are challenges out there that have to be overcome. One of the things that we should look at, and I've asked the manager to do this, is to find out what is the actual delta. In other words, if, if the price break point for recycling glass is this, and the landfill won't do it because that's, costs them money, is that something the city can make up for our share of the recycle? Now, that's a statement without knowing a number. But if you don't know the number, you can't make the decision. So hopefully, we'll be able to garner that information. We talk about the board out there, and we talk about the solid Waste Management Authority. Who is that actually? It consists of a chairman, Randall Yell, who's from Sands Township. It has three members appointed by the county. It has one member appointed by the landfill itself. Now, remember, this is supposed to be an oversight board. So you might chew on that a little bit. But the landfill itself appoints one member, and then the city of Marquette appoints two. And I think it was mentioned earlier that we're projecting that we are giving the landfill about 53% of their recyclable product. If we stop, if we send that product off to Wisconsin, the recycle program at the Marquette landfill, as told to us by the landfill, stops, because they no longer have the volume they need to function. So you can chew on that a little bit. So what I'm trying to say is that there's a close relationship between the city, the city's product, the way we get it there, how we recycle. And those are decisions, in many cases, that have to be taken beyond this commission. We can work to solve them, but we've got to work with a separate board and a separate organization to make that happen. I wish I had a quick answer that said, "Hey, we can recycle glass tomorrow, guys. Go for it," because we should be. That answer isn't there. And the reason it's not happening is the landfill. They don't do it. They claim they don't do it because it costs them money, because there is no market. That's things that we have to peel back the layers on and find out what is really there. But I know as a commissioner, I've received a lot of telephone calls, a lot of traffic. I know social media, this is a hot issue, too, and it should be. Because we are a responsible community. We always have been. We have a lot of people in this town that are socially conscious of the environment and the world around them. And this is reflective of that. And by golly, we ought to make it be able, we ought to be able to make it work. So I'm sorry for venting so long, but it has been very frustrating. And I know we're just beginning a longer trail of frustration before we finally get to the end of it. So, thank you. And by the way, thank you and to my fellow commissioners for electing me Pro Tem.
Thank you. Commissioner Plard?
I met Tom Baldini about five years ago, and we used to joke a lot of times because I heard so often that everybody went to school and had Tom Baldini as a teacher. And of course, I did not go to Marquette High School, but we used to joke that I had Tom Baldini as a teacher as well. I met him at the radio station on our radio show, the one I have with Walt Lindelaw, met him through Walt. And he would come to the radio station probably about twice a month for several different things. And the first time I met him, after he left the station, I told Walt, I said, "This is one of the most intelligent men I've ever met." And I'm 64 years old. I've been around a lot of places, done a lot of things, and met a lot of people. I tend to meet a lot more people before I'm done. But I still believe that Tom Baldini was one of the most intelligent men I've ever met, people I've ever met. And there's a fair amount of people in that group for me. But Tom was, you know, always cheerful, and everything that everybody said about him was absolutely true. And I made a comment to another friend of mine that it's, it's too bad that Tom wasn't here to hear all of this, to know however people thought about him. But I think, and that that person said to me, "I think he knew." And I agree with that. I think he did know. But it's gonna be a loss that we just can't fill. There's just so much experience. And it's similar to when people retire from positions. They take their experience with them. You can't put it in a box and put it on a shelf that we can go to get it anytime we need it. When they, when they leave us, they leave us, and that's it. Whether they retire, whether they pass away, whatever. We're never going to be able to replace Tom Baldini, but we sure as hell will try to do our best to do... do our best to do what we... What he thinks, what you think he would think we should do in a lot of ways. Certainly, we're gonna... I'm gonna think about the different councils and ideas and thoughts that I had, very much like Commissioner Smith had mentioned. It's a great reference point in a lot of ways to what would he have done, what do I think he might have done? I don't know. I make my own decisions. I've said that from the beginning, but I listen to everybody that has an opinion on a subject, and I listen very, very closely, as much as I can. I'm gonna try to hear Tom's voice in my ear as I go along, and maybe that'll happen. I don't know. But we're never gonna replace him, and I do believe that I am so much richer for having known him and having had an opportunity to work with him on the city commission because, like other commissioners, I got a chance to get to know him a lot better through this work and what he was doing and what he had in mind, and just a class gentleman all the way around, someone who I could strive for the rest of my life to be like and probably never get there, but it's sure worth the trip. So, thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, first, the light stuff. Happy birthday, Jen. I know your birthday's tomorrow. Second, Fred, I really appreciate you bringing up all those, that long story we had on recycling because I also wasn't here for that, but I was absent from that meeting, but I also had a lot of people contacting me, and I think we do need to look at a further solution. Now, next, Tom Baldini. I had to write this down so I didn't get all emotional on everyone. Tom had a way of making everyone feel very important. Everyone recognized him for all his political things he did and bringing people together, but what Tom did best was friendship. Tom and I spoke on the phone every day. I found myself calling Dave Campana four times this week because I didn't know what to do with my time. I was lost and waiting for my phone call from Tom. It was 10:00 AM every morning while I was still at work and not able to answer the phone, but she was well aware.
Tom, I just realized my speaker wasn't on. Tom also was second on my speed dial next to my husband. Even my mother was annoyed with that fact. That's how often I talked to Tom on the phone. Last time I was sick, Tom brought me soup to my house. When my father died last year, Tom called me every single day to make sure I was okay. Not once did I think Saturday would be the last time I was gonna talk to Tom the day he died. Otherwise, I would've brought something more meaningful out of the conversation than I was building my daughter's dollhouse and about to throw it out the window for Christmas. Tom was a mentor to me and a mentor for everyone, and my favorite thing that I always used to say to him is that my favorite part of being a city commissioner is I get to meet all the older gentlemen, and he would always say things to me that "I am not old, so stop calling me old." And to me, he always felt so young. So, Tom has made a difference in my world and clearly everyone else's that you see on social media and newspapers and through the eulogies, and I'm just glad he got to grace us all with his presence.
We could talk all day about the goodness of Tom. You know, I've already said something, so just want to make it short. He called me at 10:30. So, you're at 10 o'clock call. I was 10:30, and I thought he's the only... I was the only one he's calling, but after you talk to people, he called like 100 people a day. He did. One couple said, not at all related to him, on their anniversary, he would call them and wish them a happy anniversary. I mean, that's the kind of guy he was. Wasn't a publicity seeker. He wasn't someone who promoted himself. He was a genuinely good guy, funny, well-respected, and very giving, very giving. At those dreaded 8 o'clock meetings that my city manager makes us come to, Tom would always show up with donuts and the rolls. You could count on it. He was always the guy. He's just a good guy. Okay, moving on. We do have problems with the landfill. We are going to address them. It's... We're not brushing it aside. There'll be more to come on that. If you've ever lived downstate in a city south of here and it snows, you're darn lucky if you get your street plowed, if it's a side street. I am very... You know, I wake up, and again, those damn 8 o'clock meetings. When I go to those meetings, my roads are plowed. So, I'm very pleased with our public works, the men and women that work there, and I think they do an outstanding job keeping this city going. Just, you know, pay attention next time you're up early or after a snowfall. You are never in your snowed-in for more than a day. They're there, so they do a good job. City manager, you're gonna talk to us maybe a little bit about glass, maybe a little bit about Waste Management. You had a meeting about Waste Management. Got some highlights there?
Yeah, I can... Let me start with just reminding the public that I have open office hours this week, the 10th, Wednesday, at 10:00 AM at the Peter White Public Library. Tom always came to those, so I'm not suggesting that the new Mayor Pro Tem should come to those, but it's always helpful if they do. Someone else besides me should suffer through those. I'm just teasing. To answer a couple easier questions first, regarding the snow question and the plowing of streets, Department of Public Works on a regular basis throughout the winter months clears the snowbanks, clears the curbing, spends a considerable amount of time in addition to the plowing, the removal of snow. So, every year, that timeframe is different depending on the amount of snow and the time that the snow falls or over what time period it falls. So, we do spend time cleaning snow. I mean, we've been at this for a couple hundred years now, so, you know, the snow is not something that's... Removing is not something we're new to, or it's new to us. Commissioners, I hope to have the lighthouse plan in front of you, maybe the meeting later this month, the second meeting this month. That would be my preference. I've yet to confirm that with staff, but I think the sooner we act on that, the better. Getting to the glass. I came prepared to read about a four-page thing, but I'm gonna save you the misery of going through this because some recent media reports inaccurately relayed information concerning the selection of the solid waste management contractor and the process that we took, and it was critical, however, it was also inaccurate. For general purposes, the process of selecting a solid waste hauler was about a year process. It didn't happen overnight. It didn't happen after one meeting. There was a lot of work by staff. There were two work sessions by the commission. There were meetings between myself and the contractors. So, I mean, there was a lot going on, and the final recommendation that was brought to the commission at that meeting in... Was it September or October? September? Was with all the facts and all the best information that we had. And at that time, staff recommended that the city commission approve a seven-year contract, a hybrid contract with Waste Management, and it was approved. Like I said, there's a lot of reasons why that recommendation was made, including costs, including convenience, and a big one was the Solid Waste Management Authority and the effect that the... An alternative decision might have had in that authority. And to be honest, I could only imagine that if the commission would've went in a different direction, we effectively could've closed down recycling for the entire county, and then what kind of demons would we be then? I mean, you know? And I will also say that at the time, we had no idea that glass was no longer going to be recycled. I'm sure that would've factored in as well. So, but going forward, we are working very diligently on this idea or this option or this problem. We've been working on it since solid waste first announced they weren't going to take glass. We are very aware of the opinions or the position of the community to recycle glass, and we've, to this date, identified a few options that I hope to put together and present to the commission at some point in the future. One of those options is a complete review of the contract that we have with Waste Management. I mean, there are some... There is some language in that contract that offers us some opportunities and some options. There's also the potential to speak again with the Solid Waste Management Authority to see if we can get them to change their mind. I think we're in a position of... We're in an advantageous position at this point. I think we have some good reasoning behind us as to how we can make this work. I'm not in a position to offer any one suggestion or one resolution at this time, but I can promise you that within the next few weeks, we'll have probably several options for you. So, thank you.
We are adjourned.